He said the event has started, but there's no screen out. Shall we enjoy any time?
Okay.
Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Select Board. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us to the special meeting of the Select Board. Tonight we have only one agenda item and that's Town Manager Evaluation. Tonight expect we will have one of our biggest audiences. This meeting's being televised live by LCTV as well as livestreamed on the Internet. So from now on for our meetings if you go to longmeadow.org there'll be a livestream button you push and you can start watching us on TV. We're very excited that we were able to bring to our residents and employees this new technology. Welcome to tonight's meeting. A little background on our form of government. For years Long Meadow was run by a Select Board of three people. Full executive power was in the hands of the Select Board and the legislative branch was town meeting. In 2004 after a vote from the town we changed our form of government with a new charter. The charter calls for a strong professional Town Manager with supervisory five-person Select Board. The legislative branch is still town meeting. Since 2004 we've had one Town Manager, Robin Crosby. In 2011 Ms. Crosby resigned and we began the Town Manager Search in 2012. We were unable to hire a Town Manager after the search, but we hired an interim Town Manager and began a second search. Select Board members Mark Gold and Paul Santinello and the interim Town Manager brought three candidates to Select Board and we hired Stephen Crane a year ago. And Stephen has completed the first year of his contract and we're very excited to welcome his wife Kelly and the family here to Long Meadow. Looking back at the last year it's been a very exciting and unusual year. I think the biggest accomplishment by the town is the successful completion of the mitigation agreement with MGM. This required the work of our department heads, multiple consultants, and legal counsel for seven months. This has consumed the majority of the time of the Town Manager and Select Board. We also saw a budget that was brought to this town meeting that was agreed to by the school committee. Increase investment in infrastructure, increase in senior services, and under the levy limit. This budget was presented with the new Government Financial Officers Association methodology. In addition to implementing of GFOA methodologies in this year's budget we have begun the process of reviewing and adopting new financial policies in order to increase the financial health of our town. In management we settled for labor contracts, began implementation of a computerized asset management program, and began working with the Collins Institute on StatNet which is a management tool that analyzes the data collected by our departments. Operationally Long Meadow has increased the infrastructure projects. We're finishing Meriwether Williams Street drainage project which is one of the most difficult and complicated projects this town has ever attempted. We've been reviewing our fee schedule, renegotiating wireless contracts, solid waste disposal contract, all the results of substantial increase in revenue town. Scantic Valley Health Trust made dramatic changes in the retiree health plans that resulted in over $100,000 in savings to the town and substantial savings to our retirees. This has been an exciting and difficult year with so many changes and challenges this year. There's been a lot of difficulty and the Select Board members and the Town Managers have been working very hard together. As we go forward with this review I ask that we keep a positive note and remember this is the first year of a three-year contract. Stephen, thank you for sitting for this review and thank you for your past year of services. We started this review several months ago in which we handed out a form that had been created by Mr. Foster and was divided into ten sections. The ten sections were Budget Preparation Administration, Goal Setting and Achievement, Asset Management, Relations with Federal, State, and Other Governmental Units, Service and Support to the Board of the Selectmen, Managerial Skills, Human Resources Management, Relations with the Media and Community Relations, Dealing with Uncertainty and Changing Conditions, Personal and Professional Growth of the Town Manager. We each filled out a form and we rated one to five. Five exceeds expectation, three meets expectation, one does not meet expectations. Once we filled out those forms and we handed them in we have to go to open session and start the evaluation and that's what we're doing today. In the past we have not, we did evaluations of the first Town Manager, Robin Crosby, and those were not in open session. Since there have been changes in the open meeting law our sessions will be open. So we are beginning the second step of the process right now which is the Town Manager Evaluation based on the form that we began. The first section that I wanted to talk about was, let me get it here, Budget Preparation and Administration. And I wanted to read what had some of the areas we're supposed to discuss. Prepares annual projection of revenues expenditures and suggests effective strategies to maintain town's fiscal health. responsiveness to indicated town needs and policy goals as established by the Board of Selectmen. Creativity in developing budgetary alternatives options. Monitoring of budget administration during the year including monitoring of revenues necessary to fund personnel. Maintains budget control resulting in adequate annual fund balance. Establishment of effective and productive relationships with Finance Committee. Strives to continually identify innovative and creative revenue generating budget reduction opportunities so as to effectively conserve and protect resources while maximizing opportunities to improve service to the community. Now I wanted to see how the Board wanted to proceed. One of the things I did do is I started to prepare some of the accomplishments under this section and possibly some goals that we need to reach and strive for in FY15. So I wanted to see how people wanted to proceed from here.
Well, the only thing I'll say is I would certainly not want to discuss any goals of FY15 and co-mingle that with an evaluation. I think that would be, I don't think that would be an effective use of our time nor would I think it'd be fair to the Town Manager to develop goals while you're doing an evaluation. I think we should just stick to the evaluation and go through that.
Well, I think that one of the things is when we see something that we want improved we can say that's what we're hoping to see changes in FY15 or improvement. So that's why I called it goals, not so much goals of what we were looking at as a town going forward. So that was just the way we, I thought we could describe where we wanted improvement and changes.
Is there any reason for starting with two?
Because I thought that the first one which was Select Board, Service and Support to the Select Board would be the one we'd probably be spending the most time talking on. So I wanted to start with some simpler ones to get the discussion going. So any discussion on maybe what was positive about the Budget Preparation Administration or maybe changes they would like to see for the following year?
Again, I think under process Marie. One of the things I guess I'm concerned about is, is what is the scope of the discussion? And by that I mean is this a performance review of the town, of the Select Board, or of our Chief Administrative Officer, our Town Manager? And I think that if we get too far afield we're also gonna not do a service to the Town Manager by starting to talk about things that go outside and potentially the scope of what the Town Manager is. I'm very mindful that this ought to be a review of performance and not of personality and it needs to be of achievement and not of, you know, attitude or something else. But nevertheless I think we ought to be focusing on what did we charter the Town Manager with doing and how was it achieved as opposed to, you know, what goals did we set for the overall town? I think clearly the achievements you've listed are meaningful and ought to be included in the discussion, but I think it's a different discussion.
So what achievements did you, I mean what directives did you want to discuss in the way of budget and preparation?
I mean it's not necessarily up to me. I mean, you know, the best thing, you know, I mean I've done this for a living as part of my job with people and generally the way you look at it is things done well and things that need improvement. And you look at the balance of things done well versus things that need improvement and you come up with a sense that if the pile of things done well is small and things that need improvement is high, that's not so good. If it's the, if the pile of things done well is high and a couple of things need improvement then that's how you get the sense. But I don't know if we want to go through enumerating lists because sometimes that's not the best way either. It's who has the best memory at some point. So, you know, but that would be my approach, but it's not my directive.
So it would be listing possibility what went well and what didn't and where we want improvement. Is there any other way that people want to approach it?
I'm not exactly sure about this process. Sort of hashing out a document like this. I mean, you have circulated an amalgamation of our reviews. I'm not sure how we're gonna improve upon that. I mean, if we're trying to arrive at a, if we're trying to wordsmith something and arrive at language that everyone's going to agree to, we could be here a very long time. So, but, I mean, this is your process.
Well, the other way we can do it is we can say what do we want in the way of improvement? I called it FY 2015 goals. So if you don't want to go through what we already did in the amalgamation then we can talk about what we would like to see changed this year.
You're on that. Corey?
You've got to give us a book. And I took your line and numbered through the Budget Preparation Administration. The aggregate grade given to the Town Manager was a 2.5. The scoring on that ranged from a five down to a one. So there was, there was a wide interpretation on this board of our feelings on accomplishments. And we have made our statements on what we felt where the improvements needed to be made and there are similarities when you read to the different pieces. I don't know the benefit of reading each one or we can read each one. But if you, if you were to extrapolate, because, you know, I said that there was too much preoccupation it seemed by the Town Manager pushing his personal agenda and what he wanted to accomplish instead of a goal that was supported by the entire committee. And that was my perception, you know, especially involved with the quint, the push for the quint. It was quite an organized effort, demonstrations and everything else when, and I was looking for other elements of that performance indicator and I didn't see it taking place. Now budget, the preparation of the annual projections and the revenue expenditures and all that. We have a document that we revive every year and we bring back and we did go to a different format this year and I think everybody's happy for the new format. There's a lot more information coming out. But we were looking for innovative, new approaches to financing and it seemed that most of it was dealing with expanding our infrastructure, expanding the services instead of looking for innovative ways to save money. And I was looking more for the innovative ways to save money and bring the, and we know that we had problems or we perceived some problems with some of the capital programs and all and we were looking for someone to come in and finally get their feet solid on the ground and start to bring these elements together. And I never, I never saw these elements come together that well as far as I was concerned last year.
So what are you looking for? You're looking for creative ways of saving money in the budget in 2015?
Well, I think, I think the general public must understand there's about 12 different items listed on this piece of paper in front of me under this. Various things. Strives to continue to identify innovative and creative revenue generating and budget reduction opportunities so as to effectively conserve and protect resources while maximizing opportunities to improve services to the community. And you can't cut and paste that because it's a holistic statement. And we can say that we were improving services, possibly improving services to the community by getting a quint truck, but yet where's our revenue stream thing? We were just talking expenditure side only and...
No, so the quint truck first of all was, was my project. It was something that was not moved by anyone but myself, number one. Number two is, so you're talking about renovation, innovative, doesn't, let me finish the statement. You're talking about innovative financing and are you talking about things like increasing the wireless contract?
First of all, I'm not going to defend my statements with you. We might as well get that line drawn straight. This is the Town Manager's evaluation, not a personal thing that we might have between us on our interpretation. And we can move forward with that part because I, I'm not debating you and you shouldn't be debating me. That's not the point of this issue. The point of this issue is the perception that I had of our Town Manager's performance on an element of performance. Now if the information wasn't shared throughout the year to benefit me to the point that I understood what he did then we could also have a communication problem that comes back to the Board itself per se. My feelings all along should have been that we had a large plan here and I would have thought at the end of the year that Stephen would have given us a document pretty close to what I'm expecting to see show up on the screen here where he would have went to every Board member with a unified list and said, "These are my accomplishments for every one of these elements." Because obviously in the process of a year you have much closer interaction with Stephen than any other Board member has. You're at every meeting, you're at task force and there's a lot more coordination, a lot more understanding, a lot more communications taking place. Where we on the outside may not be privy to half of this and I think that's been one of the major complaints is that we said we want information. We've asked for reports, we've asked for communication and I think we've been working three-quarters of the year to get this up to the point where we feel that we're actually getting information back out to us so that as a Board we understand what's going on in our community instead of just the Chair.
So where do you want to go with this? Do you want to make a list? Do you want to do the FY15 goals? What was your recommendation on how to go forward?
Mr. Gold's got some.
Marie, I'd like to move forward in a positive manner with this and we've all written down and it's all part of the public record here what our individual reviews are on each of these sections. I think we ought to be talking a big picture here. You know, instead of, because what I think we're gonna do as we go through section by section and I agree it probably would have helped me also to have these summaries beforehand, but nevertheless, you know, we did what we did. All we're gonna do is each get a chance to read or reiterate or otherwise emphasize what we've already written on paper for each of these sections. But I think the bottom line for me is, what's the bottom line? You know, and have we come up with a, you know, can we each in a very brief summary indicate what went right in general and where we'd like to see things to go better? And a general assessment in, you know, as best we could of what, you know, giving Mr. Crane a sense of how well we think he did and give the people in Long Meadow a sense of how well we think he did and also giving us all as a group of six people a set of what we need to do better next year. Because anybody says they don't need to do things better next year isn't working very hard. So, and if you want to, I mean, I'll give you an example if that means, is meaningful, but I don't want to preempt the meeting here. But, so, I don't know if anybody else wants to do that or not because if we go, we can go item by item and we'll still be here at 11 o'clock.
Well, so you're suggesting, as you said, the list of what went well, where we need improvements?
You know, it's, like you said, if you want us to, you know, it would be even, it'd be faster if we just read, if you wanted to, if you wanted to go through item by item we just read what we wrote. But I don't think, you know, we need to read what we, people can read it and it's, like I said, it's a public document. I'd rather give some overviews.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, one way of sort of amalgam, I mean, one of the things that we did was assign a value. I mean, seems to me the evaluation at least in part is the average of these ratings. I mean, to me that's the closest thing that sort of takes everybody's evaluation into account.
Well, I think Richard sort of did that when he said what the average was of the five, but my question is, okay, now we've got the number, what's our next step on what we're doing for going forward?
Marie, you've heard me say this before, but, you know, my favorite saying I heard is, you know, "If your head's in the oven and your feet are in the freezer, on average you're fine, but you're dead." Averages are meaningless both statistically and actually. And, and, and so, you know, I have no problem with us section by section reading the numbers. And I think what Richard did is fine. It ranged from here to here and you can even read all the numbers. That's great. But again, you know, unless we're gonna get, get very specific about each section and I think we, we need to, I think the best way to do it is to talk about things that went well and things that need improvement and either we, you know, but...
So, but, Paul?
You know, in the past how, how we have handled this is and why it was a little bit different this year and why I asked for the legal opinions, the same firm that told us what we needed to do this year was the firm that set us up in the past in how to do management reviews. And basically this document was taken apart, consolidated by the Chair, sent out to the Board members and said, "Do you agree with the synopsis?" And there was a note that would be written by the Chair to say, "This is the overall view of the, of the collective and here's what we need to do going forward." We don't have that narrative that says, "Here's the overall view of the collective and here's what we need to do going forward." And that's how we have done it. Now, you can say averages are meaningless, but I mean if you take one score per, by one score, you can average them, there's a reason why we put a number one to five on each of those and you can take those numbers and extrapolate them out every way that you want to. I do think what the, what the evaluation showed is that for a majority of the Board members, the performance didn't meet the expectation of those Board members, for the majority of the Board members. And I think what we need to do going forward is either acknowledge those ratings so to speak and come up with a plan that says, "Here's how we're gonna address them going forward." Whether you want to call it goals, a performance improvement plan, whatever you want to call it, but there should be something that comes out of this process that says, "The overall rating," and it's the overall rating of the Board as the five of us have put these down, "that is where we need to improve upon." And again, you know, this, this review is not individualized, it is a Board review. And so the only thing missing really is a narrative of, you know, here's what the five reviews have said, here's where the Board, the Board, not individuals, but the Board feels the need for improvement. And I think that's where we go from, for that. I don't think that, and again, we can read each individual one, the Town Manager has seen them, they've been, they've been distributed. I know they've been in email, so, you know, they're, they're there. And again, there was a reason why we had one through five on those forms to come up with some sort of number. And so I think what we need to do Marie is really take a look at that and say, if you want to go section by section or overall review, is where did it fall and what do we need to do, as you said, to get better? I mean...
You can call it an improvement plan and maybe we should just have a list of statements. Now I think Richard said where the various numbers were. And so, do you have a statement for the improvement plan or FY15 goals?
I think the biggest negative that I've seen, or the biggest obstacle that I've seen for us to go forward is lack of communication and I, and I think that's dearly in need of improvement. I think everything else goes off of that and I think if you have better communications between the Board and the Town Manager, and quite frankly, and you're here, so I'm gonna say it, you've been very reluctant to talk to, to respond to things or I have information I've sent to you, haven't gotten responses back and I just feel that I've been kept in the dark. And I can tell you for my prior years on the Board, whether I was Chair or not, I had information coming forth from the Town Manager about things that are going on and I, it almost seems as if there's been a line drawn in the sand and then that's not your responsibility and that's the furthest thing from the truth. And you can cite the Charter and say these are operational issues. The Charter did not dissolve us of our responsibilities to run the town. The Charter only hands those off to the Town Manager on a day-to-day basis. So we can argue about that all day long. It's your responsibility to run it, but it's our responsibility to make sure that it's running. And I, and that's the part that I see, that I think needs to be improved upon is communication. And I mean in, in uniform ways, that I just, I think once, if that was better, I think everything else gets better or would be better.
And how would that, on the budget presentation administration, is there anything specifically you can say on that in regards to communication?
Well, I mean, on the budget process, there were, you know, we weren't, we weren't necessarily updated. That happened once during the first Town Manager's time here where the budget was done in, in a closed environment so to speak. And it's the Town Manager's ability to, responsibility to build the budget, but it's the Select Board's responsibility to vote on that budget. And while there was a directive that was issued by the Town Manager, there's some things that should be discussed as we go on through the budget process. Here's where we are. I found out more information from talking to the Chair of the School Committee about where our deficit was for the year than I, than I knew from our own, our own side of the government, our Town Manager, our CFO. And that shouldn't happen. I shouldn't hear that we had a $400,000 deficit at one point from the Chair of the School Committee and haven't heard that from the Town Manager or CFO yet. So I think, again Marie, I'm just focusing that my biggest concern for the Town Manager would be to improve communication. And again, I think what that does is it improves everything else. And I think every, I, that's just, that's what I'm saying. And in the budget process, that's just one example. We should, we should, again, the Town Manager has the responsibility to create the budget. It doesn't mean that it's created in a bubble. It should be, that, we should be informed of what's going on well before it even gets to us about little things that are in there, big things that are in there. To have the budget process work the right way for us to vote it, and I think we did a horrible job on the budget this year in terms of discussing it and voting on it, wait till, you know, late votes at 11 o'clock at night and, and things like that. And that's us, that's, that's on us for doing that. We probably should have handled it better. But I think that part of that was trying to cram it all into one little area of time. And we, I think if you're better informed that those decisions at the late, at the time we have to vote for it are easier to make, easier to make.
And on budget preparation and administration?
Sure, I'll give you my overview and I, to a large extent, and I'll just read what I, I wrote to some degree. It's, it's, the budget was, was a great budget. We had a good budget. But I think the budget preparation process left me lacking in that we knew nothing until we had the budget. And I would have thought that with a, you know, a five-member Select Board and the Town Manager was relatively new, we might have been asked, "We have this option versus this option." But none of those ever came forward. It was really a, I think that was also part of the communications issue. We, you know, in terms of, you know, would we want to make changes? Are there new things that could be in the budget? We had a very, very good budget based on the prior budget, acknowledging there wasn't a whole lot of extra money in the budget to, to do that with, but, you know, to do things with. But sometimes you have to take a look at, what are we gonna drop and so we can do things new or make some recommendations? I think that, that, you know, I'd look for a Town Manager who's leading a budget charge to look for the, to the Select Board as, as representing the citizens, just as he looks to his staff representing the, the employees and the people who have to execute the budget, of how we would do things. Whether it's, you know, I'll just pick on every, every department a little bit, whether it's, you know, how many cars are we buying for the Police Department or what park and rec programs are working or not working or what senior adults programs are working and not working and, and the like. So I think that, that it, it was a good, we ended up with a budget that was fine, it was balanced and everybody worked well, but I would have liked to have been more involved in, if nothing, if not a consult, certainly an inform along the way, using the terminology I sometimes use of, of, here's where we are along the way, especially if there were decisions being made. And in general, I think I, my ranking was, you know, it was above expectation, but still some room for improvement. And I think that's, I'm sticking to that because, you know, GFOA was, was implemented, but, but, you know, it probably shouldn't have taken the effort that it actually took or maybe I just didn't understand the effort it took. So in general, I mean, I, you know, I thought it was done okay, but like anything else there are areas that I would have liked to see done a little differently.
Alex?
I mean, I guess one of the things that sticks out in my mind in the budget process was the amount of time that we spent. We went many meetings and the thing that I also recall is sort of how many questions couldn't be answered. And the way I think about it, maybe this is just because of what I do for a living, you know, when somebody puts forth a document that they're advocating, that's their document. You know, that's, that's what, you know, they wouldn't be advocating unless they knew, knew it. And it was kind of apparent to me after a while that there were a lot of things that just, he didn't know much about. And we had to sort of go back and it took, I mean, I think if we were to add up the number of hours that we met, I think there was one week that we met four times and this took place over a two or three week period. And it left me wondering how, how much of a grasp we really had on these things because as a Board member, I, I'm not in a position to sort of get behind the numbers and get behind the representations. I mean, I could do it if, if I was empowered to do it. I know how to get behind the numbers, I know how to get the facts, but that's not our role here. So I'm, I'm really trusting what I'm being presented with. And when, you know, there are obvious problems with the information, it makes me kind of wonder, not just about that particular point, but about the overall quality of the information generally. So I think that's something that I, I would expect that if... So I think that's something that I, I would expect that if I was presenting a document, that I'd know the document. And, and, and what it really seemed like, this was very, it was very much a draft, it was, it was really up to us to sort of ferret out the truth. And I, I didn't think that was the best process.
I got one, just one quick thing, Marie, and then leave it alone. Stephen is, is in a unique position because he's, he doesn't fall under the open meeting law. I mean, it's, it's, his relationship with us is kind of unique, that he can pick up the phone anytime and call any member, and usually talk about anything he so chooses. And I can tell you, I cannot remember the last time I spoke with Stephen on the phone for any matter associated with this town. And I would think that's likely out of the ordinary. And I think that's what we've been echoing here, is the communication thing and the, the free exchange of information, which I think is, is missing. I don't think there's a, uh, let me call Paul and talk to him about something. He's been here for 35 years. Let me get an opinion. I, I, I don't sense this is here, and I don't know why it was lost, but it seemed to have been lost almost from day one. And I think that's an, on, it's a shame that it was lost, because that bridge is going to be hard to build back, but that bridge is still here. Each member of this board has some contributions that they can make to this community and is a resource for our town manager. And if nothing else, it's a bouncing board for information. And I didn't see that take place this year. I, I saw really quite the opposite. I saw a rather frontal put-up that I don't want any influence, I don't want any suggestions. And, and I, I don't think that's a good way to run any ship. And especially if you're brand-new in a, in a first-year job and, and a community that you're just building up, especially when you do look at the depth of some of the members on the board, and in, in this community in general. So I, I think, you know, if I was going to tell the town manager anything, it's just start using the phone and communicate, and honestly communicate. You don't have to follow everything that's said, but you could at least talk about it. Because a lot of the items that you mentioned on the budget could have been cleared up before we got in that budget meeting. There was a lot of confusion and stuff that came out. So I think just better communication.
Um, I think-
So do I get to respond to these as we go?
No, I've got to do mine. I get to have my turn, too. He says he wanted to know if he can talk now. I found the budget process to be the best I've seen so far. I was really impressed that it was under the levy limit, balanced. We actually got the school committee to sit down. These joint administrative meetings were very informative. I see where we could maybe have gotten information out a little bit earlier. I think the, literally, it was 24 hours of meetings, I counted the hours, where we crawled through the budget, I think could have been more productive. But I had kept asking the select board members, review, this is what we're going to be doing tomorrow, give me questions so I can make sure we have the answers. And that, now, let me finish. And that just did not come, those questions. So it dragged out the process a little bit longer. I think that if we want the answers, we get, we send them to ahead of time. I believe the town manager should be a little more constructive in figure, in organizing all the questions we do have and getting back to us in a timely manner. And if we had a little more back and forth in the budget preparation, it would have been better. But the final product, I, I felt that he did listen to us when we said we wanted to increase the infrastructure investment. He had set aside 175,000, I think, or 172,000 under the levy limit, brought up a possibility of leveraging that up with bonding. This board decided not to do it, which is a choice, because it is a controversial thing, whether you do bond road projects and sidewalks. I think it's a first step, a first good year. I think we can change the way we do things. The one area that we did fall down in, I think, was in the capital planning projects. I think there was a little bit of difficulty with the fact we didn't have a full capital planning committee. We need to really build on that and to get some really good quotes on what these projects are out there. And I think we all realize that, that going forward. So I don't disagree with the communication issue. I think that the best way to fix the capital, the, the budget process is really concentrate this year on trying to get a really good capital plan, and task the town manager to do that going forward.
Just a quick comment, you know, because I think you hit the nail on the head, Marie, when you, you sat, you sat here and you just said that you're proud that you met 24 hours with the school committee, but you met-
No, no, I, no, I meant-
With a joint, no, not with a joint administrative meetings.
Oh, no, I smashed those two questions. 24 hours is what we did.
Boy, I gotta tell you, it doesn't feel like I did much until the first, the first draft of the budget came out, but-
And then we were 24 hours in session.
And I hear that, but, you know, why is, why is the joint administrative committee team, or whoever they are, I don't even know who they were, first that, why are they being consulted before the select board? And that's part of my problem with communications. You know, I'm on the select board, charged with responsibility for a budget, and we're off, and I don't even know who we are, but people are off talking to other people without talking to us. And I think that's the, my, my personal annoyance is, don't we get a say at that early stage, if they do?
No, the joint administrative was talking, remember we had that joint meeting where Paul Peschergic and Tom Maza came and laid out where they were in the budget process in the beginning?
Right.
That was it. That was, that's where we came in on it.
Okay, well, I heard that there were meetings with the chairman of the school committee and, and Tom Maza and you and, and Stephen Crane. And, and my annoyance is, don't I get a say?
No.
And doesn't the select board get a say, and why not? And where's that in the, in the process that was outlined?
The, well-
No, no.
Okay.
You know, and-
May I tell you what we did in those meetings? Those meetings is, we, we set up what that joint meeting was going to be on the administrative. So that was saying what we wanted in the presentation. So nothing was done behind the school, select board's back-
Again-
-in regards to that.
Fine. Just, we're getting, getting out of process here, I think, but, but, go ahead.
Steven, did you want to say something on the budget preparation?
Sure. I guess to answer your, your question directly, Mark, and this is something that'll come up, it's a question of the charter. Preparation of the budget is a town manager function, is the, the charter, not the select board, gives the town manager the authority to prepare the budget. That's, and Paul, you made the comment about, we can cite the charter and argue back and forth all day. Perhaps we should establish a time to do that, because I do believe the source of a lot of the things that were said in the review forms, a lot of that conflict probably, in my mind, comes from a, a non-shared understanding of roles and responsibilities, which has been brought up but not really fully discussed. So in, um, so in terms of the budget preparation, and I'll be honest, I have prepared municipal budgets. So I, I didn't, I don't, I'm a municipal professional, I don't need a lot of guidance in terms of how you prepare a municipal budget. One of the reasons why you hired me is because I came in with knowledge about how to do that. Now, every town does their budget a little differently. So I relied heavily on those people in the town departments who write the budget every year. And it is my understanding from them that the budget process went well, from an internal That it would, that the work product, both from a financial standpoint, as well as a presentation, presentation standpoint with the, the new GFOA best practices, was a success. I disagree with the notion that options weren't given, as Marie laid out. I thought I gave the select board an option that it has not had in many years, according to our CFO, to either not tax to the max, tax to the fullest extent of the levy, or increase spending on capital. And the, the select board, as is appropriate, debated that policy decision and made it. On the capital plan, I would agree that the capital planning process was flawed. And that is one of my top goals for fiscal year 2015, is to really revise how we do that. I will note that the, the planning process is, was essentially the same as it has been. And the parts that are within the town manager's purview, I carry forward, as, as has been carried forward by town managers in the past. There are other committees that are involved, and one thing that I did differently was get all, get representatives, get the chairs of all those committees in the same room at the same time, to talk about the roles that each committee can play in the capital planning process. And that was something that they were all grateful for, and I think is something that will make the process smoother in future years. But we certainly had projects that did not turn out to be what, as advertised during the capital planning process, and I regret that very much, and am internally working on corrective actions for that. In terms of the debate on the budget and my level of preparation, I disagree strongly with the characterization that somehow we were not being truthful about what we were presenting. I do admit that there were times where I was not sure about some of the details of it, and it is a large document, and we do have many facets of our operations. And even though I do believe the CFO and I combined, as we presented the budgets, answered the vast majority of the questions, there were a couple, upon cross-examination, that I didn't know the answers to. One of the reasons why, and this is one of the reasons why I think we pushed to have questions upfront, so I could present accurate and well-thought-out answers to them. I chose, I elected to not have the department heads present at the budget hearings. That is my discretion as town manager. That is a, that, that function is something that's vested in me by the charter. And the reason why I did that is because in meetings where department heads have been present, I have felt that sometimes a back-and-forth was engaged in that was not as productive for the policy goals and the, and the administrative, administrative direction of the town. For next year's process, I will rethink that, because there were times where, certainly at the end of that 24 hours, when I did have the director of public works to answer questions, it, it went a lot more smoothly, and I did take note of that. But I appreciate the committees, or excuse me, I appreciate the board's feedback on this, and I will take note for next year's budget.
Okay, the next section is-
Well, Marie, I have to respond, I want to say something. Because you, you made a comment, is, we actually did use all of the levy limit, so please, you know, we don't need to mislead voters or residents that we, the budget didn't come under, because the final budget voted, there was a plan adopted, presented by the CFO and the town manager to use that levy limit, and we funded projects with it. So we, we used every nickel of levy limit that we've had in this town. And that was part of the plan in terms of bringing the budget, because it was presented with the budget. And, and Stephen, to your point of, you decided not to bring department heads. I don't know where in the charter that says that you don't, you have the authority not to have a department head in a meeting, the finance committee can call him to him, to a meeting, it's, 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 that's part of their duties. And, and quite frankly, it was a major disappointment that you decided to present the budget, based on your experience and, and your past management experience, and to this town, and have as many, as many questions as you had that you couldn't answer at the time. That's what the value of the department heads being there are. And you specifically chose, you just said, specifically chose not to bring them before the board. And I think you did a disservice to the board and to the town by not having them there. Because it's their job, they presented their budget and gave it to you, and then you sat down with them and said, here's what we can and can't do within your budget, per the budget directive. The discussion that you had with them is between you and them, but the discussion that they should, they should have came before the board to defend what they wanted in their budgets. And I, and again, I go back to the fact that, and I mentioned it last night, and it was during the budget process that we're buying, we're, we're spending money on police cars, when, if that was done in the budget process with the police chief, we could have had an understanding of potentially why he wanted to buy cars this year, when it was voted earlier, last year, not to do that. And that was a disservice to the board. And I don't know why you did that, why you thought it was a, the practical solution was not to bring your, your professionals in.
A car was authorized for 14.
Pardon?
A car was authorized for fiscal year 14, in the budget.
No, I think you need to go back and read the minutes.
Uh, I-
Because I'll tell you exactly, the car was authorized only in the event of an emergency, when a car, if a car was in an accident.
I had the CFO, I obviously was not here during the preparation of the budget, I had the CFO looking into it. And the budget that gets presented to the select board is the town manager's budget, not the department head's budget. This is not a town administrator form of government. So I just acknowledge that perhaps it, for the purposes of information, it may be better for the department heads to be there. But I have observed for the purpose, for the purposes of respectful dialogue, I evaluated that it may not have been the best decision to have the department heads there.
So just to follow up with that, your assumption was that the board would be disrespectful to the department heads? You just said it was respectful, based on a respectful, not, not perceiving respectful dialogue, that you kept them out?
Just based on what I have observed in previous meetings.
I don't know how many board members or department heads we've had at meetings, so I don't know how we would observe that, but, that's fine. So your decision was that you thought the five of us would be, or potentially any one of us, five, would be disrespectful to, to a department head, so we chose not to bring them in? Okay. As long as we're clarified and we understand why.
And we can agree, disagree on that, that's fine.
Nice, as long as we understand why it wasn't brought in, that's fine.
All right, moving on to goal setting and achievement, the areas are, works with select board, board of selectmen to establish annual goals, address community needs, facilitates and prepares the development of annual goals and objectives for municipal departments and operations, monitors progress towards achievement of goals and objectives, and promotes goal achievement among staff, attains goals and objectives within established timeframes and allocated resources.
Which I remember is this one, that we're working on?
Uh, six.
So, did it say?
No, it's not showing that one on the screen?
I thought the next one was managerial skills.
No.
Sure, it was, number three. And I'm going by what's on the screen, I'm going by what's in our-
Well, this is the thing I prepared, I had goal setting was the next one. Any comments? Goal setting. Mm-hmm.
You know which number it was?
I'll find it.
Six.
Number six. Should have put in information.
Let's let you chart.
Marie, I'll, I'll start out my comments, and again, I, I'm not convinced that this is a, an appropriate way to go about this, but, but Mike-
Well, I was, this is going to take forever.
I know.
Well, which way do you prefer doing it then?
Well, I mean, I mean, if we want to do 10 at a level of detail, when we've, when it's already been written out, I-
That's why I thought we would just go to what we want to see in improvement and recommendations going forward, but everyone seems to want to make comments, so I'm open to whichever way you want to do it.
Actually, that's exactly what I suggested, is what you just said.
Because you wanted to make comment?
No, no, just the opposite, just-
Okay, so-
We should be, we should be looking at this review as, as a collective and say, where, what, what's the needs that the board feels need to be addressed?
Okay, so what needs do we need to be addressed?
Paul, Paul, he is a-
For goal setting and achievement?
No, I think in general.
Oh, you just say in general?
I think in general. I mean, you know, you know, Paul, Paul, you spoke about communications, and I'm going to couch it a different way, huh? You know, and, and Stephen, you and I have talked about this, but I'm going to phrase it as, I, I think we need to, to have you manage up as well as you manage down. You manage down extraordinarily well, the people who work for you, and, and that system's working really well. But your upward management with us is, to me, giving us what, what people are hearing and, and what, what we're writing is a, we don't, we don't feel, we don't feel what you see. We don't see what you see, we don't feel what you feel in, in some of these things, because of the, just, maybe it is communication, but whatever it is. And I'd like to ask you to, to consider focusing more next year on, on what I call managing up, talking to the, the members of select board, and, and whether it's on the budget, you know, who gets to decide whether Parks and Rec runs a program at, at Greenwood Center or not? If it's all decided before we get here, and our, our decision is, at the end, we budget it or we don't budget it, but it's already in the budget. If you talk about, about the, you know, the goal setting and achievement, you know, it's, you know, can we, can we do some things beside MGM? I mean, the surrounding community agreement with MGM was wonderful. We all spent a ton of money, a ton of time on it. And I understand you spent a ton of time on it, but we spent a ton, and money, we spent a ton of time on it. You know, and, you know, the question is, should we be able to have a longer list than, than, than three items here? You know, it, we've got, I don't know, 200 and some odd people on the general government side of, of the town. They're not all in management, they're not all in, in supervisory roles, but one would hope that we could have continued to pick- that we could have continued to pick up some of the other lists of things that we wanted to do in addition to MGM. And I'm not downplaying how much effort that took. I know it took a lot of effort.
But are you downplaying everything else that happened?
What I'm saying is, I don't see the list of everything else that happened as being sufficiently notable, not that there's not a list, but sufficiently notable to do this. You know, I've said this to you privately, and I can say it publicly, is I understand that the benefits of the town, running the town, there's a lot of work involved in day-to-day basis running the town, you know, keeping the roads plowed, and the police out on the street, and the fire department responding, and that, there's a lot of work to doing that. But that's not enough, in my opinion, we've got to be able to do that little extra. And to me, that's the difference between getting along, getting along, and doing those extra things that we sometimes have done, that you often see in other communities, and, you know, that I'd like to see us be able to do. But again, the general impression I would say is that I'd like to ask you to focus more on managing upward with the select board, because we believe, I think to a person on the select board, we've got a pretty capable group of department heads. You know, when we look at, you know, Paul Pesterz and what he's doing, and Barry Jarvis, which, you know, and I go on and on and on. You know, we turned over $12 million cleanup to our fire chiefs. So we have a very capable group of people, you know, we'd like to, I'd like to see you dealing with our issues a little bit more.
Okay, so...
Richard is here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. So I'm saying, are we going, we sticking on goals, or are we...
I don't know. I think, I think, Mark, just real quick, only 30 seconds on the bar here, 35, to echo in on Mark's part, because I had mentioned the same thing to Stephen, that there seemed to be too much online supervision instead of management, and that was my concern. And he was pulled into a lot of this stuff, I understand, and I do understand, he was trying to be responsive to it, but in turn, he ended up being the supervisor instead of the manager. And there were several instances there, he was actually out in the field looking at things that his division chiefs, I think, should have been there doing, or somebody within our organization besides our town manager. And that kind of toes into what Mark's saying, manage up instead of supervising down, because I told Stephen directly, I said, we don't need you to be a supervisor, we need you to be a manager. You've got to be looking a year ahead down the road, not down to the daily focus on what's happening on Maple Street, other than if it blows up and it's out of control, and you've got to step in as a manager, but not to supervise that event. So, close the door.
All right, anything else on goal setting and achievement?
So we're really doing this?
If it goes quickly, it'll go quickly. It depends on...
I'm confused, I think we're just doing general impressions.
That's it, we'll just stick to general impressions?
Yeah, and can I make, I'm not gonna respond to the comments until everybody's done. The document that's on the screen, you have in front of you, per the process that was set forth, where the chair puts together an assembly of it and goes over with me, that's the result of that. So in terms of, hear from me, like, things I think are goals I should be working towards, things I think we accomplished besides three, a lot of that is in that document. And I know we don't have to go through it right now, but I just want to point out it's there. Sorry, Alex.
So, general impressions. And I hope people would say positives, as well as areas that need improvement.
I guess I would echo some of the concerns about communication. At one point during the year, I think Stephen had sent out an email, I think it might have been about GPS, it was about town business, and I emailed him back a question, and there was no response. And I emailed him again, and I said, you know, is, I mean, you know, really, or you're not responding now? And the response back that I did get was kind of surprising, which was, oh, I don't respond to select board members, like it's, like a waste of my time. And, I mean, I'm paraphrasing, but that was, that's how I took it. But really, like, I generally don't respond to select board member. And I noticed that, you know, as part of this document, Paul indicated that he had, I don't know, a dozen things that he had asked about. There have been things that I've asked about that haven't been responded to. And I guess the sort of bottom line is, and I wrote this, is, you know, I think the bottom line, it's not a satisfactory supervisory relationship. And then the question I've posed is whether the town manager views it as a supervisory relationship. We've had meetings where different members have made reference to it, and every time that that's come up, you know, the town manager has, you know, wielded the charter. And so, you know, I wonder whether there is fundamentally a difference of opinion, a difference of philosophy. And, you know, and I assume that the town manager is always trying to do what he thinks is best for the town. I don't think anybody on this board is doing anything but that. The question is, what do people think is the best thing for the town, and who gets to decide that? And I think one of the philosophical differences that exists right now is that the charter, as I see it, sees the select board as the policymaking body. And I think that's appropriate, because we're elected. If we're not reflecting the policies that the town wants, then we get voted out, or we get voted in. An employee doesn't have that same responsiveness to the people in town. So what we're charged with is making value judgments. You know, just last night, we were talking about water rates. You know, what's the right rate, should it be tiered rates or something else? You know, that's not a mathematical formula, it's not technocratic competence. You know, if you want to have somebody in a municipality who is both a policymaker and an administrator and an executive, that's a mayor. Some forms of government have allowed that, and it concentrates a great deal of power in one person's hands. And, you know, like I said, it just feels like there is a different philosophical attitude. I recall going to many meetings of this board when Robin Crosby was the town manager, it has a very different feel. Robin always portrayed her role as the implementer of priorities set by the board. You would hear that at town meetings, you would hear that during board meetings, and, you know, and I think that's a very different relationship than I believe the town manager believes, exists between this select board and the town manager. I've, I think, you know, I even offered to sit down, speak to the town manager offline, I got no response. So I, it was a little, so it's a little unclear to me how you work in a supervisor relationship when you can't talk. So, you know, I think those are concerns that I have going forward. I do think that the things that separate the select board and the town manager are all bridgeable gaps. I'm convinced of that. I don't think there's anything that can't be fixed, but I think these issues do need to be addressed.
I think you've probably hit a few things right on the head, that the problem is knowing where our roles and responsibilities are. And this is something I think that conversations often devolve into, is, is this really supervisory? Is this getting involved with operations? Is this something that we should be making a decision on? Is this something we should, the department head should be involved with? And that is a problem. I know that we struggled with Robin, but I think that it's gotten worse throughout the past year. And I, we've talked about it numerous times, I think having someone come in to talk about roles and responsibilities would also help to decrease the tension within this select board and the town manager. I don't see it getting better at all this year. I think we've really worked hard to try to get things done, and we have succeeded in getting things done, but it's not a pretty process. And I think that in order to see improvements of communication, I think we have to also see some changes within the board itself. And I would hope that the next chair looks to get someone in here to discuss roles and responsibility, and maybe do some team building, because if we're not all rowing the boat in the same direction, we're never gonna get through the tide, we're never gonna really get things done. And I think this is an intelligent board, and a very capable town manager, and we should be able to get this done. So that's my general thoughts going forward, because it has not been an easy year. It really has not. I've found the stress of being on this chair, and these meetings have not been pleasant, and it's been very, very difficult, and I don't think it needs to be that way. I think we should be able to work together.
Did anyone else want to have general thoughts before? Richard?
No.
No? Stephen?
I appreciate your comments, Alex. And I agree, there is a difference of philosophy, and again, I think, I go back to the first comment I made to Paul, which is, I think this is a different understanding of what the roles and responsibilities of the chart of the select board versus the town manager are under the charter. And I consulted an expert, a legal expert in Massachusetts law, sent them the charter. And, because I, I've asked for a facilitated discussion with the select board to discuss the roles and responsibilities of the charter many times, and that thus far has not been embraced by the select board. So be it. So I consulted a legal expert to say, to ask the question, am I doing this wrong? And in his review of the charter, and when we were going through it, it was such an aha moment for me, because it explains where a lot of the disconnect and conflict is, as I said at the outset. And I think the philosophical difference is that, you know, when the members of the Charter Commission came to a select board meeting and presented a letter to the board about their views of how the select board views the form of government, I think spurred by an article you wrote, expressing your views about, and the board's views about how the, or what you thought the board's views were about our form of government, it was interesting, you responded about referencing the Constitution. And the person I spoke with made a similar reference to the Constitution, but in a different context. He said, there is a division of powers, like the Constitution has a division of powers in the legislative, executive, and judicial, our charter is a division of powers. And the powers that are divided aren't shared. The budget preparation, the appointing authority, and the management of the town organization, those are executive powers vested by the charter in the town manager. Those aren't powers that the select board has. Policymaking powers, you know, appointing of boards and committees, those are, those are powers that the select board does have. And one of the things, you mentioned supervisory role a few times, I'm an appointed officer of the town, I'm not a, you know, a direct employee of the select board. And the policy, when you talk about, it says here in Article III, Section 2, Part D, policy role. It said, "The select board shall be the primary policy body for the town, guide long-range operational facilities planning, supervise officials appointed by it, and monitor budget compliance." That's where it says supervise. That's the only place it says supervise. And the context, according to the person I spoke with, was that is a policy supervision, like if the select board adopts a smoke-free workplace policy, then I have to abide by it, because I'm under the policy supervision role, I, along with anyone else appointed to a board or committee or any other post by the select board. That's not a direct employment administrative supervisory role, and there's no way that that's spelled out. And so if you disagree with what I'm saying, and what the analysis I've received, as I know how much you value a lawyer's opinion on this, perhaps having someone who does, is an expert in municipal law, to come in and explain all of this and draw the lines for us would be helpful.
Stephen, can I just ask you a quick question?
I'd like to finish. I'd like to, I'd like to finish.
Let me just ask you a question.
Okay.
If you're not accountable to the select board, who are you accountable to? Because we're accountable to the voters.
I am accountable to the select board through this process. And I have, I have a three-year contract, this is the end of year one, there are provisions in it for discipline and suspension and termination. Those are all clearly set forth in my contract, so I am accountable to that.
So how would you describe the relationship if it's not a supervisory one?
It's a policy supervision, like if there's a policy directive, then the select, then that's town manager, is my duty to carry it forward. Now, what is a directive of the board, sometimes to me, honestly, it gets a little confusing, because there are times where a board member will say something forcefully and repeatedly, and no other board member will object, and it takes on the feeling of a board directive when there really was not a board deliberation or action on it. That's actually why I pushed for some kind of vote on the tiered rate structure. In terms of communications and responding to emails, I did suggest that I, I didn't, I don't respond to select board members, that's, I think, what I said was, I don't respond to negative comments I receive from select board members. If there's a question or a request or something like that, I try and be responsive. I admit, and this happened in our exchange, I sometimes have a hard time determining what is kind of rhetorical, like a question asked to really make a point, versus what is a genuine request for information. I think what, I think, what I hope people understand is that that's probably the most difficult part of this job for me, is not the disagreements we have during our meetings, where we have our agenda in front of us, and I present the materials, and sometimes the materials aren't complete, or I'm not well-prepared to speak on them, and I admit that that's something I definitely need to work on, that's, if you go through your packet, that's high on the list. It's the relentless kind of second-guessing and negative feedback I receive offline. And I think, to be specific, with our relationship, I remember we spoke one morning about something, and an hour later, I received the newspaper, Long Meadow News, in which you had written a story, very critical of something I had done. And you never mentioned that you were, oh, by the way, just so you know, I've written this story for Long Meadow News. And I know there was kind of a vague discussion at the select board level about, we really shouldn't do that, it didn't stop you from doing it again, that's fine, you would certainly retain your First Amendment rights, but as a human being, it seems to me, it strikes me as odd as an intrigue to bridge a gap for a personal relationship when there's really been no accounting for that happening. And that's meaningful to me, because as a career professional municipal administration, that type of thing follows you, whether it's Long Meadow or another town, or, you know, townspeople judging me who haven't met me yet or haven't observed my effort, that type of thing has impact. So, it's not that I can't get over it, I certainly can, like I said, I am a professional, and I've, I may be new to Long Meadow, but I'm not new to politics and public administration. So I do hope that we can clarify roles and responsibilities, which I think will in turn clarify the issue of communications, and what needs to be communicated, and when does it need to be communicated. I will admit that when those lines are drawn, it will still probably be that I have not done as good a job as I should have in communicating with the board, and that's something that I will endeavor to improve on. And Mark, to your point about what we've done, I am extremely proud of what we've accomplished at the town departments. And you're right, Alex, every day, everything, every decision, every action is only to further the best interests of the town. of the Town. And sometimes that may cause disagreement or conflict with the Board, and that's something, you're right, we should develop better communications to work out. But we have accomplished a lot, and there's a lot that you're probably not aware of that I've been able to accomplish and do. Part of it, because I've done so under the authorities that are vested in me in the Charter. I should report on those, but again, sometimes I feel reluctant to share, because I, I honestly, I get, I'm afraid that I'm going to be criticized, or somehow it'll hurt the Board's perception of my performance, even though it's an authority that, that is, you know, with the Town Manager. So the other thing is, when I, this is more of a personal anecdote. When I moved from Massachusetts to Wisconsin, I was kind of an uptight, high-strung Massachusetts person. And during my four years there, the people I worked with really taught me to relax a little and not sweat the small stuff. And that's something that I'd hoped to bring back from Wisconsin to Massachusetts. And it was actually really good for me personally and professionally to really develop that tolerance for stuff happens, and understand that, as I think I had in my DPW presentation, my favorite Vince Lombardi quote, "You should pursue perfection, you know, relentless pursuit of perfection, you'll never catch it, but you may achieve excellence in the process." And I do suffer from that, that failing of the human condition known as imperfection. And I know Town employees are also similarly afflicted. And what I have found is that despite my best efforts, things do get let down, and mistakes get made. And it frustrates me a lot. What I have found is, I'm back to sweating the small stuff, because of what I feel are, what I feel is at its base confusion about what are the roles and responsibilities of the Board and the Town Manager. So I really hope, for all of our sakes, that we can clarify that, establish better lines of communication, and continue to serve the Town well.
I'm going to just say something, then I'm going to cut to the chase. I, I'm blown away that we're going to talk about, you mentioned roles and responsibilities, and Stephen did. Communication is not a role and responsibility. It's an active form of your job. You've been lousy at it, period. Absolutely lousy at it. You sent me a policy of requesting information from Department Heads that this Board voted on last year, when Barry Del Castillo was here, because other depart, other committees were requesting information from employees, and it was meant to curb some of that. You sent that to me and said, "That's a policy, that's what you should abide by." On the bottom of that policy, it says, "The Town Manager is to inform the Board of every policy, of every request for information to depart, to employees from other committees." Not once did you send out an email or an information about that, and I emailed you about it, saying, "I'd like to see what that request for information were." Never did it. So you cited a policy, which is our role and responsibility, to stop Board members from talking to Department Heads, and then at the very bottom of the policy, what you were responsible to do, to inform this Board of requests for information to Department Heads from other committees, you failed to do. Not one report.
I think you don't.
Okay. No, no, no. Let me just, you've, you've sent that to me to show me that you've created a wall, a line between Department Heads and any employees in the Select Board. I've been told that we can't talk to them. You can't, they can't talk to us.
Certainly hasn't stopped that from happening.
I haven't talked to Department Head. I, I don't know, I, and I can tell you this, is that what I see is, you want to say, communication has nothing to do with roles and responsibilities, and you've thrown that out the window. You certainly have not communicated with this Board on any issue, small or large. If you're sweating the small stuff, we don't know about it. If you're sweating the large stuff, we don't know about it, because you don't talk to us about it. You don't, you don't answer, we have voted directives, Stevens, which you have never answered in a public meeting. Voted directives of the Board that you, that were delivered to you, and you never responded to them. So there was no confusion about who asked for what or when. Voted directives of the Board in which you never responded to this Board with. That's a communication issue. And there's two directives, I can go back and get the meeting, they were never answered, it was to this Board, that the Board voted on. Okay? And I know they were delivered. So, you know, and here's where I'm going to cut to the chase. Overall, if we grade this on a one to five, this, this numbers, and I know, Mark, you're head in the oven and your foot on the ice, averages don't mean anything. It was a below meets expectation. I think what I would suggest to this Board is that prior to the next meeting, that we have, that this Board comes, the members of this Board come up with corrective action or things that we want to see improved upon, instead of trying to decide that tonight, and move forward with it, and we give that to, and deliver it to the Town Manager. Because I think what we need to do is, is if we're, if that, if this review in total is, does not meet expectations, then we need to address what those are and deliver what our expectations are to the Town Manager. And the Town Manager has to come back and say, "We agree with them, or we don't agree with them," and here's where I think it's different. I think we can argue every bit of this evaluation, line by line, and we're still not going to get through this evening, and we'll be here for tomorrow and the next day. But I think what we should be doing is coming back with what we feel is what needs to be improved upon, and move forward from there.
That's what I actually asked for this meeting to be. You can't say we're going to have another meeting to do what we need to improve upon, because that's what everyone, again, should have prepared for this meeting, to come forward on what they wanted changes and improvements. And in regards to giving us information, I'm as frustrated as Stephen is. A report will be given, and I don't like the report. It's not good enough. It's inadequate. There's never a time that they say, "Oh, well, you know, this is, thank you, let's try doing this a little way, that a way." It's just, no, no good. Adequate. Does not meet expectations. Now, let's come, we're going to make a whole list of other things that we're expecting. Do it now. Make a list now of where we're going to go and go forward, because we can't just keep kicking this, this can down the road.
I'm not trying to kick anything down the road.
And I, no. I think that this is something that should have been dealt with for months ago, and instead, what is, we've seen is people have become less and less civil with each other. The emails that are going back and forth are not, excuse me, I'm a little concerned about that. It's bang, 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 bang. Attack, attack, attack. Then we go to this Board meeting, and the attacks continue. We need to decide, if you want this done, then, when the work is done, show, "Thank you. That was a good report. I appreciate that." Let's talk about the, an example to the level that it has gone on in this Board, is the MGM negotiations came out successfully. How many people sent a congratulatory note to the attorney, thanking him for the work and the Town Manager? We have got to start.
The people who paid to do that, you mean?
Yes. We have got to stop just attacking, but also show when things are done right.
No, 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 no.
That's my concern.
You, you, you hired people to do a job.
Yes.
They got paid. I didn't get a thank you note from the attorney saying, "Thank you for the exorbitant rates I charged you." I didn't get one.
This is, this is where you've got to work with people, you've got to talk when things are done right, as well as things are done wrong. So you want things specifically done, and how you want it done, let's make the list, rather than wait till it comes and say, "No, that's not good enough. That's not good enough."
Go ahead.
Mark.
Yeah. Stephen, what I heard you say today, tonight, concerns me, that, you know, we've got a Charter, and I'm standing behind the Charter. Because there's the Charter, and then there's common sense on how you deal with people who literally hire and fire you. And you can be right and find yourself out of a job, because you're, you're standing behind the Charter. And I can give you a couple of examples, but I'll give you yesterday's example. I would have thought that some point ago, when the Building Department heard that a multi, you know, multi-unit or whatever group home was being built on Redfern Drive, the fact that we have nothing we can do about it as a, as a town based on zoning laws, still would have raised our flag enough for you to say, "Hey, Select Board, you may," because, as you know, we hear about it. I mean, I started forwarding you, a selected number of the emails I get on everything from "The light doesn't work at the tennis court" to this kind of stuff. And it would just seem like, you're right, you're not obligated to do any of this, but you ought to be doing it. And, and, and I feel badly that you feel that because you're not obligated to do it, you're not going to do it, whether, whether it's the way you're doing specific things or what our roles and responsibilities are. Marie and I can go back to, you know, last August, when you first, I said, "We need to have a discussion about roles and responsibilities." So when you said, you asked for that, and it didn't happen, never asked about me, because I've been pushing it from my side as well. So the fact that that hasn't happened is, is truly bothersome. You know, I'm going to have that discussion now, but it sounds like we can have a discussion about roles and responsibilities, as long as we adopt what your legal opinion tells you your roles are and our responsibilities are. And in fact, there's what's on paper, and then there's in practice. I'm not, I've, we've never asked you to cede your authority. We've asked you to increase communications, and whether it's, you know, what's going on with the air handlers in the high school, or the, you know, the, the Building Department at, you know, on Redfern Drive or something like that, there, there's a, an opportunity for us to be involved to the point or communicated with, to the point where we feel comfortable that you've got the situation under control. Because when I hear from somebody at Redfern Drive, "What's going on?", my first note is to you, "What's going on?", and you're, "Oh, I know all about it. Don't worry, there's nothing we can do about it." Well, there may be nothing we can do about it, but we still had eight people come to the meeting last night to talk about it, and maybe our sensitivity, which is different from yours as an administrator, is, is, well, let's do something proactive. Maybe we'll send a letter to the residents and let them know, "We understand what's going on, we're trying to work with these people," or not work with, whatever it is. That's the kind of difference between delineated roles and responsibilities by the Charter and, and what I think that added communications with the Select Board can do. I agree, we need to understand what our roles are. Do we micromanage? Yeah, we do at times. And, and the reason we do at times is, is because we feel that we, we need to understand what's going on, because we're being asked questions, and we want to be able to answer the questions that were asked. And without that level of what you may call micromanaging, we don't know. You know, I feel really badly when people call me up and say, "What's going on?", and I go, "I don't know, I didn't even know there was something going on on Redfern Drive. I never hear about it." You know, I didn't, you know, and so to me, the frustration is, you know, to hear that you feel there's this legal delineation of the Charter. I understand the job. I understand what you're, you're being asked to do, but I also understand what we're being asked to do, and if we, and if we draw, build a wall between us, even if it's only a two-foot-high wall, instead of a 12-foot-high wall, it makes the jobs each of us is trying to do, as you found out, an awful lot more difficult. And that's my, my concern right now.
Mark, I appreciate your saying. I've worked for elected officials directly for almost my entire career. I know exactly the pressures that elected officials are under, and whether it's Long Meadow or congressional district, it's the same. And that, truthfully, is one of the benefits of having me, is because I am sensitive to the needs of elected officials, because I, I have worked for them directly for many years. But I do think that when we don't stick to the Charter, to the paper, that, like I said, I think that is the source of most of what, of the conflict. And if it satisfies the Charter or the people who hire and fire me, I'm going to pick the Charter, because I am personally liable for the execution of my duties. And that's my, it's my obligation to the Town. As, as an officer of the Town, it's my obligation to fulfill my duties under the Charter. I don't know how else to say that.
I think there's a consensus among yourself and the Select Board that we want to improve communications for information and reporting. And I have seen a vast improvement over the past six months. And you have been asking for how you want, how we want the weekly reports. You sat down with Mark and I, and we gave you some ideas, and the weekly reporting's improving. I have seen improvements on daily or events that are occurring within Town, and you're starting to respond more. So I think we should say, going forward, communication seems to be something that we all want to work with. Maybe if we make a list of exactly what we're looking for and what improvements, maybe that might be a way to go forward on solving that communication problem, which seems to be the heart of what we need to fix in the relationship.
I, I agree with that statement to a point, and I'm not, or, and Paul, to your statement, again, to some extent, I think there's what is needed to be known and when, and to some extent, that that falls into roles and responsibilities, who needs to know what when, and we obviously have different judgments on that, but I agree that I do need to keep Board members informed of something. I remember you made the comment once, you know, "Hear about it from us before you hear about it from the grocery store." There are times where I don't hear about it first. And you may, and you guys, you know, you know a lot more people in Town, you're out and about, you are elected officials. It's possible you're going to hear about it before I did. And I, I think the, the problem is, there's a, and I don't think, to be honest, I don't think this is unique to me, I think there's a lack of trust, or a lack of, it, I mean, it's micromanaging, or controlling, or what have you, that if I know about it, you should trust it, if I know about it, I'll let you, if I know about it, and in my judgment, it's, it's more than just normal day-to-day stuff, then I'll let you know about it. And I need to, I need to obviously earn that trust by letting you know about things more often. But like I said, it's sometimes a challenge to bring myself to do that, because I think sometimes it ends up creating more conflict than it resolves. And that's something that, like I said, I hope we can work on.
You know, I guess one thing that, you know, you were talking about responsiveness to the community. The group home, I guess, which is sort of what we're talking about on Redfern Drive, I didn't know about it until residents came into, to me, that's a really significant issue.
Can I talk about that a little bit?
Well, could I, could I say?
Sure, sure.
And, and I guess one of the things that I was struck by was, I mean, again, the communication is one thing, but sort of the dead certainty that you seem to have, without having consulted with Town Council, about the interpretation of a zoning bylaw, or what seems to be your dead certainty about the Charter. I mean, I've been practicing law for 20 years, and, you know, the judge I used to clerk for used to say, "The Constitution was a bare document." You know, that there's, and what he meant by that, there's a lot of interpretation that goes into it. There is a concept called the separation of powers in our Constitution. It's, it's a very hazy line. And to be able to say anything with complete certainty, where one form of power ends and the other begins, is very hazardous. And one of the things that I've been struck by during different points, this included the casino mitigation process, was how, after I've looked at the legal regulations and the statute, you seem more certain than I was. And, and I, I knew there was no case law interpreting it. And, and I guess that's, you know, I think one thing that's important is to sort of understand, you know, when, when things aren't as certain. But, but if I could just finish, the...
I mean, you did interrupt me before.
Okay, go ahead, but I've got something else to say.
Why, because you're going to, you're going to change chapters, and I was going to go back to the stuff you've already addressed.
All right, okay.
The thing on Redfern Drive, and I, we didn't get into it, because it was a resident comment, but I did have the information at hand, that I did not, our Building Commissioner is charged under the laws of the Commonwealth to enforce our zoning laws, so I'm going to give a little bit of deference to him on his statutory reference on what we're talking about, because he, I had him research the question. I did know it was coming. If it was an agenda item, I would have submitted a report with the packet, but because I was told by a resident that they would be coming to the Select Board meeting and making a resident comment, I didn't feel it was for me to speak on behalf of a resident, and it's also possible they just may not show up. And so I prepared myself with the information from our Building Commissioner, as well as our assessor, that I felt would answer the two key questions. We didn't end up getting into it, but the fact that I prepared the information, and it was more than thin gruel, I thought I was doing a service to the Select Board. Now, you're right, I could have, in hindsight, I should have said, "By the way, I understand that these people are going to be coming to this meeting. I know Mark knew about it, and I know Paul knew about it, because he had called our Building Commissioner to ask him about it." So I probably should have sent an email to everybody, so everyone's on the same page. I should have done that. In terms of the Charter, that's the whole point of this issue of having a facilitator come in and clarify it for all of us.
You know, you were, you know what?
And I have to suggest it because I'm not a lawyer. I can't read the charter.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is that if you look at what's happened to our Constitution, that debate about the separation of powers never ends. And the fact that it never ends means that there, as Mark was pointing out, there's interpretation and there's sort of common sense that enters into it.
But there's law in this, though, in the Commonwealth.
All right. So the other thing that I was going to bring up was a specific point, and this is at Fall Town Meeting, when we were presented with a study that a resident had done about crossing signals not working. And, you know, I'd been on the board for three or four months at that point, but I'll tell you, my feeling was of personal embarrassment that that kind of problem could exist and that a resident had to go test it, had to prepare a report for us. Because, you know, once somebody becomes elected, it's not a question of what are they doing, it's what are we doing? And that "we" includes me. And so that was personally embarrassing, even though frankly, as you point out, I have no, you know, it's not strictly speaking my job to go test crossing signals. But still, it was personally embarrassing for me. And one of the things that was surprising several months later was to find that for months afterwards, nothing was really addressed. I mean, and I think it was only in response to some questions that we actually got a report, I think in March. I'm still not aware of whether they've even been fixed. To me, that would be something, if I'm personally embarrassed about it and I'm not operationally responsible, I would think anybody who had any kind of connection to those crossing signals would be personally embarrassed. And that would be the thing they would do the very next day. The fact that we had to bring it up and check on it, I don't know, I just, it's perplexing. And so, and again, because I do not attempt to micromanage or to figure out exactly what's going, what everybody's doing at all times, things like that make me wonder about what else is getting missed.
I think that was a good point in that we have a lot of projects that come up, whether it's the locked gates or the, and we probably should start keeping lists and seeing if the answers are coming. Because I know we do come up with a lot of things like that, so that might be a communication tool in the future to keep track of. I'm sorry, Richard.
No, it's okay. I'm just slowly raising my hand. Yeah, I think if we had on those computer programs that puts the words up after they've been repeated so much, I think the biggest word would be charter. I don't know how many times Stephen said it tonight, but there is a preoccupation with the charter and I totally agree, Mark, with what you said. If you can get so preoccupied with the charter that you fail in your execution of duties, and it can be very easily done. We've had your signal, I totally agree with you on the signal issue. I think I voiced a stronger, stronger comments to you on that issue. That should have been taken care of the next morning, not many months later. It's an immediate response issue. It was a health and safety issue. We have, I don't know, since I've been on the board, I know my wife's taken a head dive on our sidewalks in our town and we've had several people take them. Now, my neighbor had rather severe surgery, Kelly's tenant. He was laid up for months with this thing because of a sidewalk crack in our town. We have another one that has just been received. We do not seem to have done anything collectively to warn our people on the sidewalks. If nothing else, give our people a fluorescent can of paint and go out and stripe them. Wherever they're raised, stripe them. I don't care what it looks like. It beats the daylights out of having a tort liability of not identifying or put a sign. Do something proactive on it. That's just languishing out there. And I know, I don't expect you to be a first-line supervisor, and I've said that repeatedly, but this is a management issue. What are we doing on this? This is a crucial, this lady was severely injured, a very severe injury.
I spoke with her. She was very young.
And I'm, believe me, we could have a fatality because these things, when you go, you go headfirst fast. Because my wife disappeared in a nanosecond because it's just down and that was it.
Doesn't take much, like a one-inch or two-inch reveal to catch.
And your head bounces remarkably well on concrete. It's remarkably well. So these are the issues that bother me, Stephen, and I don't need you to be a first-line supervisor, but boy, it would be nice if I knew right now that this had been sent to somebody and that somebody is setting up to start striping those tomorrow or putting a grinding machine out there and grinding them off. I know we can't repair them all tomorrow, but we can certainly remove the trip hazard or identify. I understand there's an implied liability by identifying that hazard too, so maybe we need legal guidance on it. Because once you identify it, then you said, "Hey, there's a hazard here." So it increases, but they're out there and we know they are in repeated incidents. And it falls in the charter too, but I mean, I get irritated when I see this. I send you a lot of pictures, don't I? Okay? And I sent you one today, just something I happened to spot when I went by and it wasn't there a couple of days ago. And I do that in somewhat deep respect for the community because I think somebody needs to be reporting when they see obvious deficiencies out there. And if nothing else, get a safety cone put on it, not so much fix it tomorrow or the next day, but at least to get the darned things identified. And I will continue to do that because I can't stop from doing that.
One of the, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, you didn't. I was ready to finish.
Okay. So that's, I think in terms of the cross, and I don't know, I mean, we don't want to get detailed if we don't get in the weeds of this specific thing and that specific thing. I mean, issues are multi-layered and I said this last night, is, you know, is every, is every deal the same level of bigness? I don't, it's been my experience that it's not, but obviously it's a subjective matter. And, you know, we approve a budget and it sets basically the work for the year. The budget follows, the work follows the budget, the budget doesn't follow the work. And you know what that means. It means that it's not, here's all the stuff we need to do, so let's, so here's the money to go do it. It's what can we afford to do with the money we have? And I don't like, I don't, when I hear from department heads that either money or staffing levels are an issue, I generally don't accept that, at least not the first or second time. It needs to be proven to me that money or staffing levels are the issue. But I do, one of the things that I'm hopeful will make, the project list, the requests of projects, things like that, you're absolutely right, I do need to do a better job on that. When it comes to things like the sidewalk, which is heartbreaking when you read the woman's report, our work management system is now online and we're kind of slowly building up to go, it's live now, we're kind of building in some back data and things like that. But the app for people to be able to take a picture and report it directly into the work management system will be going live with that pretty soon. I want to, we need to beta test it a little bit.
Can I beta test it for you?
You want to?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'd like to take this.
Sure. I can agree to that.
Yeah.
But I think the point is, we don't, we do not, and we talked about this last night, we don't have a clerical works. We don't have a full-time person driving around inspecting things like that. And so the hope is with this technology, every person in town with an iPhone will serve that role for us. And that's, you know, and these are types of things that, you know, and I don't, I don't want this to come across as an excuse because it's not intended that way, but I do look back on the casino mitigation thing and a lot of time was spent on it, Mark, but I promise you, no human being on the planet spent more time on it than I did. And I am extremely proud of how that turned out. And not only that we won, but why we won, the arguments that resonated with the gaming commission, the arbitration panel, how those arguments came to be crafted, the information we used to prove them. That said, all of that time, when I was looking back at goals and things that I could work on for next year, if I took all of that time that we spent on casinos, which is a once-in-a-generation issue to come along, I think I could have done a lot of this stuff twice. And typically, a manager or an administrator in their first year has some time to figure out the lay of the land from what are the processes we have going currently, how can we improve it, get a sense of what the organization's like and then begin to develop a plan to turn the ship around or just steady the course or whatever the needs are in that particular You know, the expectations of this board are high and I understand that. And the expectations of the community are very high. And the expectation was that improvements were going to start on April 3, 2013, which would be my second day in the office. And I do think we have gained a lot of ground and I guess I, and I'm, you know, the, I had the department heads do an anonymous 360-degree review and I wanted their feedback of how they think this first year has gone. And I was heartened by the fact that many of them felt it went very well. Not perfect, of course, but well. And between the heightened expectations and this kind of monolithic issue that we had to deal with, I do feel like there are things that were definitely left on the table that probably should have been year-one accomplishments. But now that, that, those things are behind us and I do have a clearer sense of how the organization works and what our assets are and where our deficiencies are, I do feel like this next year, I'll be in a much better position to really, the seeds that have been planted in year one will start to bear fruit.
One little quick one I wanted to mention, that we, we talked about that sidewalk issue. I want to let it, make sure everybody's aware that we now are dedicating somewhere between $200,000 to $400,000 a year towards a replacement of sidewalks.
This, this select board greatly increased the amount of sidewalks, I think, in fiscal year 14. I mean, it's, we couldn't fully fund it, couldn't fully fund the requests this year, which was a disappointment, but it's something we're trying to gain ground on.
But I mean, the people need to be aware, we're not, we're not sitting on this. We're repairing them about as fast as we can and there's a lot of money going in.
I mean, the crossing signal that was in question was fixed immediately, or not immediately, but once the bidding process and the equipment was available, that particular signal got fixed. Not all of them, but not all of them are broken.
We presented a whole list of them.
Right. But we had, we had them all inspected and identified issues with them. But the repairs to them, I mean, we have a traffic signal budget, but the repairs to all, not all of them are in immediate need of repair. And I think this is an operational judgment that our town engineer and the Department of Public Works and I make. And so I guess to say, something should have been done right away, something was done right away, that traffic signal that was in question in that unfortunate incident was fixed. And we also assessed all of the crossing signals in town.
That was several months later.
It was in process. It's fine if the board, if the board disagrees with the pace of work, that's fine.
I mean, this is a question of fact. I mean, I saw memos and that had dates on which it was done. We didn't get any of them. And the dated of the, dating of the memos where all those crossing signals were looked at extended into March. So, you know, that's, and again, it's things like that that make me wonder, what about the things that I don't know about that are going on? And it makes me hard to have confidence.
It's disappointing that we can't look at a lot of the things that are going so well to offset the comparatively few things that aren't going well. I think that's a frustrating part of this position here and it's kind of a occupational hazard. I think, Alex, two things. The town organization does not enjoy the liberty of dropping everything and focusing on only one thing. And things like crossing, inspections of the cross, they do take time because they are folded, there are additional duties folded into the day-to-day activities that keep everybody busy every day. And I guess the question I have is, the directive was given to the town engineer to do this and he directed his staff to go out and do these things. And again, it happened over time, mixed in with the rest of their work that they were doing. If I'm not supposed to be a frontline supervisor and, I mean, if I called the town engineer every morning and said, "Where's those, where's the crosswalk signals?", then it probably, it may have been done a lot faster at the expense of other work, but that one particular thing, but that sounds like a frontline supervisor thing that I'm hearing that I'm not supposed to be doing.
Well, and I appreciate that. And if you came to us and said, "Look, I'm not getting into the details, but I've identified some management issues in DPW and this is what I'm doing to address them."
I did that.
That is not what I heard.
During the presentation?
What I heard, DPW presentation, which, this was one of the directives that I think Paul was referencing.
That didn't get followed up on?
Correct. That was, we had a vote in November, I think it was like January, and I recall you referencing as a request, and we had to sort of, hey, what, you know, where is that? And then we had a PowerPoint. And the takeaway for me was, you know, glowing reviews. And, you know, I, to me, what I think is, you know, a great opportunity for somebody new coming into a unit of government is that you're not weighed down by everything that's happened in the past. You're not associated with everything that's happened in the past. You can be a change agent if you think that's right. What, and I think, you know, maybe other select board members have mentioned this, that what I've seen is sort of you function as a defender of the status quo. And if there was a powerful argument for defending the status quo, then I would be all ears. I haven't heard that powerful argument. So it, so I can't, on the one hand, hear, well, the crossing, you know, I can't get involved in crossing signals, but on the other hand, you know, DPW's being, you know, managed and supervised wonderfully. Those two things just don't go together for me.
I felt like I gave a pretty balanced report on the DPW. I don't feel like I said they're perfect, you know, or they're great, you know, nothing's wrong. I feel like I gave a pretty fair report. I think, Alex, when 95% of the feedback is negative, it's hard to not sound defensive. So I don't really get, what's that?
I agree with you because that's how I feel about your relationship with the select board, that 95% is negative. I agree with you.
Yeah. So I think when what I'm hearing, when I present information is largely negative, of course it's going to come across as being defensive. Because I really don't get the opportunity to talk about the many, many good things that are happening all throughout town departments, many of which predate my arrival by a long time because of, quite frankly, the impressive talent we have in this organization that you noted, Mark. And it's, as a manager, I'm so lucky to have the team that we have and quite frankly, the town residents are very lucky to have the people we have in place who are, who despite the negative feedback, show up every day doing their best to serve the town and provide excellent services. And I think the town does get excellent services. Again, not perfect, there, and there are things that are, I mean, we've had many shoot ourselves in the foot moments in the administration. And I, and I'm responsible for a fair number of them. But that still, to me, does not outweigh so many of the good things. And I think the thing I want to clarify, another part I want to clarify, this is a bit out of sequence, but, you know, what is the job of the town manager? And I think we have, there are many good ideas the board has for projects. And so it can easily, we can easily slip into a perception that the town manager is a project manager. But the job is really, you know, so many hundreds of things happen during the day that providing oversight, providing oversight of any organization or any office takes time and attention and energy every single day. And so that is really the nature of the job. You have to have the capacity to do special projects and carry forward, you know, new directives on top of all that. But the, but the job is more than just getting accomplishment on a single project. And I can tell you that my time is, you know, the cumulative many hundreds of small little things take up the vast majority of my time. I mean, the HR function is a town manager function and personnel issues, for any, for those you have managed, take up exceptional amounts of time. And we have a lot of them. We have a large workforce, since we have a lot of them. And like I said, I think I'm, I'm disappointed that some of those personal issues have arisen. I think I've, if I haven't done a good job communicating how I've dealt with them... I think I've, if I haven't done a good job communicating how I've dealt with them to the select board, I, I will do better on that. But the fact of the matter is, the reviews from the department heads, like I said, gave me comfort that they feel the organization is being well managed.
I just, okay, you know, I, Marie gave a little history of what's gone on in town and so forth, and I want, I, I want to clear some things up. I think that, because there's been innuendos dumped out there, you stated some things, Marie stated some things. I've been on the board for eight years, never have I seen the board where everybody acts in unison all the time. I think there's always dissension amongst the board, because that's, there's five of us, and I think that's just natural. I would say this, I've served with the previous town manager, the, the year we had the interim town manager was an absolute, I can't even say what it was on television, but horrible, 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 budget process was miserable, and he did a very poor job, in my opinion. But I also had six years of working with Robin Crosby. And I can tell you, and my disappointment, Stephen, with you is that, in those six years, Robin was a highly educated, professionally trained manager who may have brought up the charter once in those six years to the board. And Ms. Angelides may forget, her first couple of years on that board, and I remember one time, Marie, you brought in pictures that you went around and took, and, and dumped them at, at the town, to the town manager and say, "Look at all the deficiencies in town." So everything that, you may criticize someone from the board, you've done, and it's, and other board members have done that in the past. And I also want to remind the board that when that town manager came in, he was the first town manager who had to deal with consolidation with a school committee who didn't want to consolidate, or school department, I should say, with a park board that didn't want to consolidate. And not only that, that town manager also had to deal with a million-dollar DEP fine and a cleanup process that took years to do, and two washouts on Captain Road and Long Meadow Street. And then also had to deal with, later in her term, the October storm, which rendered the town useless. Okay? So, stuff happens, and it doesn't mean everything else takes a backseat. And I almost get the feeling that, and I, I don't accept the fact that the casino is, puts everything on the back burner. I really don't. That's part of the job. Stuff happens. And, and you've admitted that things didn't get done. And they didn't get done, I, I, that is not an excuse. The casino happened. The former town manager didn't say DEP happened, and I have to settle a law, a million-dollar lawsuit. I have to do a cleanup down, down at the DPW dump. That didn't stop the day-to-day from happening. And I would make a recommendation and make a motion that we develop a performance action plan based on any category which would, did not meet expectation, and move it forward on a 1690, 30, 1690-day program to see if we can make improvements in it. So on any of the items that did not meet expectations, that we develop a performance improvement plan for those specific items. That's my motion.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Never mind, you made motions on the floor.
I made a motion.
I'll second that.
Yeah, a circular discussion. Who would you, who do you feel is going to orchestrate that?
The select board.
Are you going to have a subcommittee?
I made a motion, I didn't have the answer.
Oh, okay.
So, you know.
Well, I, I think everybody understands exactly what you said. I guess it's the mechanics of, and I do, I do agree 100%, because if tomorrow, and the day after, and the day after, and the day after, as people meet with Stephen, if there's not a reinforcement of the areas where we feel improvements need to be made, it's highly likely that we'll be having the same meeting next year, with the same, not the same things, but a similar type of things being flushed out and saying, "Hey, here's these problems that we see." And it seems to be the communication, understanding, not only what you feel is valued, what we feel is valued. It, it is a very, very much of a two-way street.
I think my concern is that, here we are, a meeting, we've been here several hours, we should be able to do some action steps now, and what you want in the way of goals and performances. And we could meet quarterly and do it, but to say that we're going to go, we're going to create this document, this board can't get together and do things like that. It just does not respond. Up till now, we've been talking about doing an evaluation, we talked about doing it in October, then we talked about doing November, December, then it was pushed off to January. I said, "Do the things in January." Then it went out to April, and now we're back to here. I think we should just take a small step. We agree it's communication, and list two or three things we'd like to see done in the next two months. Then we see, as a group, did we get those reports the way we wanted? How do we want to correct it? Because we had talked about communication reporting before. Mark and I tried to sit down and decide what would be the best way for the weekly reports, but then other people aren't in agreement to that. I think we should take small bites in stepping forward and trying to get a, what the changes we want done.
Can I, can I answer Richard's question? Richard, the mechanics of it, is you have a document.
Right, we've got a document.
We already got the document.
Right.
And I think what, I think what my performance improvement plan is, that we, we work with the town manager to improve that over a 30, 60, 90-day period.
Right.
And every 30, 60, 90 days, you're, you're doing another evaluation. And that's how you get to a performance improvement plan that had, that, that answers your mechanics question. There are some categories, this was an agreed-upon review, and I think we need to show improvement. And any category that was below, does not meet expectation, or below meets expectation, I'm sorry, those are the categories that we need to focus on and improve. So, whatever number there are, that's what we need to do.
Right, and you, you have the mechanics document right here. I mean, this is the document, this is the performance document. And it's very easy to look at the comments here on what's been said and to, to generally ascertain what part is missing.
We tried to go through sections by sections, and everyone agreed that was too cumbersome. And also, it was repetitive in that, that there's a general theme, so they said, "Let's talk general themes." We went to that, and it was, no, let me finish. So we're going forward. I know, but I'm saying, I'm not comfortable with that document. I think it's repetitive. I think we go ahead and we say, let's say two or three things on communications of the way we want to change. Because it's a matter of these five people coming to an agreement, coming down to two or three items, and let's give it 30 days and see if we, as a board, can come to an agreement on something. Instead of coming to five different subjective views on how he's supposed to report something. Stephen.
Can I, can I just make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Because the, under my contract, I have an annual review, not a 30, 60, I mean, I mean, so, I mean, you can, I suppose you can review me anytime you want.
I'm sorry, you misunderstood. Performance improvement plan. Because obviously, in some of these categories, you did not meet expectation in the review.
Yeah, clearly.
And I think there needs, the outcome, and to Marie's point, so we don't kick the can down the road, is what I'm, what I've made the motion to was, to set a program to where we get those up to at least meets expectation.
Well, let's, I mean, to some extent, the, the expectation is a subjective thing. I mean, and if we're not going to accept averages, I don't know how you get to that. I did put, we did put some goals on each of these things.
Is this your document?
It, it's originated by the chair, and then I, that, which was the process, you weren't here yet. You know, the process that we started off with some weeks ago was, each, each board member fills out their individual document, and then the board, the board chair synthesizes it and goes over it with me.
I just was, I thought Marie had drafted this.
She had drafted it, and then we worked on it together as was part of the process.
We're trying to figure out the goals, the FY15.
So, just as a, a building block for the conversation, we could go through the goals, and if things need to be added to it, or subtracted to it, or whatever. I mean, I think, you know, I'm, you know, I was open to the board's guidance, I think. Like I said, I want, I want things to improve, and I just, I, I'm having a hard time visualizing how a performance action, I mean, one of the comments you made, or one of the comments that was made, was about the quality of presentations. And so it didn't meet expectations. So is that going to be, change the background on your slides, or write the, I mean, I, I mean, how specific do we get? Or if it's just, improve your presentations, and I don't, you know, I don't know how stylistically, how would I do that? So I, I think, how specific do we get? And that's why having these kind of, they're not general goals, I think there are pretty specific, but they are, there is a set of goals for each thing.
But these aren't our goals. These were never voted on by the select board.
Yeah, but the select board has goals for itself.
Right.
And then I have, and then I have goals for myself, for the, goals for the town.
Some of these were voted on.
Yeah, but I mean, this, this document, I...
Well, that's why this was a beginning working document, and I thought we would go...
For what? I mean, for what?
Section to section going forward, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is just a working document, that's all.
Because, I mean, we've got the review document here with a bunch of comments, I think you could, it's not too difficult to find out where the stresses are from some of the members on what elements are missing on these.
Well, then you go to, that's where I started to do, budget and preparation, what do you feel the goals for performance that we want to see him do? What do you want to call it? Improvement plan, goals?
Well, I think, I think these members expressed when we jumped on that element, and then you decided we'd go, because of the hour, because it could go to eight, nine hours, and we generalized the plan.
Which is communications, right?
Yeah, a lot of it, a lot of it came back to communication, but there are some specifics, but there are some specific comments in the evaluation.
I understand that, Richard, but I think the issue for me, and I think the issue for the board, Mark, is that there are 10 areas and five board members, which is 50 things.
And that's what it is. There's no changing.
But the board, the board should have some obligation, to me as an employee, to agree as a group. I mean, I, I, you know, I serve, I serve the board as a group, and it's, it's not, and I said, it is not really a clear, direct supervisor relationship, but it's certainly not one-to-one with each individual member.
Now, you're crossing lines. You can't have it both ways. It's not a supervisory relationship, and then it is.
It's a policy supervisor.
So we did, we did, we did a review. The review came out, there's averages, there's numbers in there, and, and quite frankly, you average it together, it comes out, does not meet expectation.
Yeah, sure.
So to go from there, as the management body, you have to have an improvement plan. Otherwise...
Right, and that's where I set forth some goals that I think could help improve things, based on what I read.
But this is what, you're graded.
Based on what I read, in those, based on those comments, these are the goals that came out, and honestly, the most, the most of them are in the service to select board, because clearly that was an issue, and I, I mean, I'm just offering as a suggestion to go as a, as a productive way to advance this conversation.
And I think the, I think the select board needs to have that conversation, and, and this is subjective, this document isn't. The document is a numerical document.
The, the point is, if we're really going to do an improvement plan, and we want to measure that 30, 60, 90 days, you've got to give specific things that we're looking for, not improved communication.
They're in here, Marie, everything was graded.
Then...
No, that's not true. This, the form isn't one, two, three, four, or five. That's how you, that's how it improves, is either, it either goes up, or it doesn't, or it goes down, and that's, you, you have a number system. You agreed with the review.
This is not giving direction.
This is, this is certainly more direction to the town manager than anything we've ever discussed in the last year. This is, this is, the review is agreed upon, it's the items that are important to the board. And I don't know how much clearer you can get than what we put in that document.
I mean, some, I mean, we have a motion on the floor. I mean, I don't know if there's any more...
Any more discussion on it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll give you an example. The, I'm just picking at random the first thing, which was budget preparation and administration.
Which document?
The, the document that, that's up on the screen, it says budget prepara, so there's a, the FY15 goals that came out here are adopt rigorous process for town capital projects and continue implementation of GFOA. But yet, if you look at what the two, three, four, five, six, seven bullet areas are, it includes other things like maintains budget control resulting in adequate annual fund balances, establishes, establishment of effectiveness and productive relationships with, with the finance committee, you know. When I wrote the review, I was looking at these seven bullet items, not, and to me, the, the two items that you have here aren't going to address the issues. Now, I didn't have, you know, I didn't rate this one particularly problematic, but those, that wouldn't address those issues, those seven bullets. They certainly talk to, perhaps, potentially budget preparation administration, but it's, it's like teaching to the MCAS, you know? To some degree, we're saying, you know, perform to the, to the evaluation form, don't, don't perform to, to, to something else. And I think that may be what Richard is saying, when he said, "What you need is already on that piece of paper." Maybe it was Paul that said that. What you need is on the piece of paper. We're, we're just saying, you know, we ought to, we ought to work to, to the, to the MCAS here. And so that would be my, my take on it, but there, there's just one other thing I, I wanted to say, because I've been sitting here kind of listening, and I, I'm very disheartened by the fact that I've heard more than once that there's a difference between the town manager and the select board, because in the eyes of the residents, we are collectively the executive branch of the government. And, and, and the fact that there seems to be, this is my job as defined by the charter, and this is your job as defined by the charter, is very troublesome to me. Because it is our job, and I think Alex said, you know, it's, at some point, when you get on the select board, the town's problems are, are, are our problems. You know, if the sidewalks aren't done, it's, it's, it needs to be seen, it's, it's as much my problem as it is the town manager's problem or the DPW's problem. And I haven't heard a lot of that this evening. It's really, here's my role, and here's your role, and let's not, let's not let these things interface. And that's, to me, that's part of the issue, is that we're not working as a unified team, that it is our role in, in each one of these things. And whether it's, you know, Richard taking a picture and saying, "Stephen, something's got to get done," you know, there, there's a couple of ways to respond to that. One is, "Richard, that's not your job." And the other is, "Richard, thank you. You know, the DPW's got a lot going today, I don't know when they're going to be able to get to it, but we're going to certainly put this on the list, because you're right, this is an issue." Now, I don't know what kind of response he gets, but I think he gets the whole gamut of things. But we've got to be able to understand that Richard's not doing it to criticize the, the DPW or to criticize the town manager, he's doing it because it's his problem as well as, as the town's problem. It's our problem. And the perception is, and I think I sent this to you in a note myself a couple, a week or so ago, I'm not even sure you knew about this, Stephen, but, so in case you didn't, here's something I, I heard about, you know? And I don't know if you even heard about it, because I got it from a citizen who's been apparently calling a town employee directly. But, but, you know, I, I really see that as our problem, and I think that's the attitude I'd like to see us take, that's been sorely lacking over the last year, is that it's not our problem, it's your problem or my problem.
I think, Mark, you say that it's troubling, that we have a clear division of responsi, or a division of responsibilities by the charter, and that doesn't work for you, that's, I mean, that's troubling in and of itself. And I honestly, and, you know, you mentioned Robin, Paul, I mean, I think, I, I don't know, I wasn't here when her tenure ended, but were these issues all crystal clear when she was here? That's, that's not the impression I get.
We've actually had a town manager who asked this.
The fundamental, the fundamental core of the issue, to me, and to me, this is the heart of the matter. And I don't say it at every meeting, and I don't respond, the emails I do respond to, I don't say, "That's not your job under the charter, that's my job." I usually try and address them and follow up on them. But at the end, but the essence of working together and being the executive branch is everyone understanding, and being a, everybody rowing in the same direction, is, is understanding what everybody's role and responsibility is. And I guess, I, I, you know, I'm going to follow this. And I was hoping to gain a shared understanding of what this is, but I'm going to follow what I think it is.
Can you tell me who violated the charter this year?
I don't know how that's germane to anything.
Well, because you keep referencing the charter, you're playing the victim, this is my book, I have its word on a poll, and so are we. We have a role and responsibility as a select board. None of those responsibilities were given up under, under the charter, except those defined in the charter. Under mass general law, we still have roles and responsibilities, to the safety of this town, to the residents, and so forth. And you keep citing that, "This is my role, this is the charter." It's insinuating when those folks wrote the letter, and I challenged one of them to tell me when we broke the law, is what their letter stated. Okay? Tell me when we've interfered with you doing your job. When we ask questions, you come to us with a Williams Middle School boiler project. You're coming to us for what reason? Because under that charter, you can't spend that money unless we make the allocation at town, to put it under warrant at town meeting. So under our role and responsibility, we have every right to ask questions. And what do we got? We got three different proposals now, from your staff, who we don't talk to about it, which is fine, that's your job. I don't want to know who, what the boiler, what Mike Rabel or Adrian Fanuff do about the boiler. But we've had three different proposals now, from you through your department head, for that, for a boiler. We have every right to ask a question. That is not overstepping our bounds and saying that's a, that's an operational issue.
No, it never suggested it was.
You keep holding up the Charter and saying, I'm going to do this. Tell me when we've violated it.
When you asked me to discipline employees because you saw them at the United Bank drive-through in a town...
I didn't ask you to, now, see, you're putting words in my mouth. I snapped a picture of the truck going through United Bank Drive-Thru, a truck with a trailer on it, doing banking on town time.
Yeah, and it's a violation of the United Bank policy.
And I did not, I did not ask you to discipline them. I know, I certainly did not.
Maybe it was something like, I certainly hope you will discipline the employee, and it's, and I have a, I mean, I have an accordion folder full of those emails for me, too.
You go right ahead, because I didn't ask you to discipline anybody. And I'm telling you that, you know, so, so, so I send you a picture, and that's a violation of the Charter.
That's not what I said, Paul. That's not at all what I said. All of maintain from the start of this...
And you know what's even more upsetting is that you never got back to me about it and said, hey, I talked to the person, and you know what? The guys, we're not going to do that again, or something. You, and you, you have literally put an us versus them mentality in the town. It's you and the department heads and town employees versus the Select Board. And that was, and I can tell you that, honest to God, that never happened under Robin Crosby.
I can tell you that that wall existed long before I got here.
You're wrong.
You're wrong.
Okay, I...
And we've been, I've been here, I object to it because you're wrong.
That's not how the department heads feel.
Well, but you're wrong.
Then have them come and talk to us, because I like to hear them say that to my face. Because I can tell you, it's the same department heads that went around the town managers' back and say, here's what I need in my budget.
They did that this year?
I didn't say this year, the former town manager. They would, they would be the ones to call up and say, here's what I need in my budget. What am I getting this? Can I get that? What, this is what I'm hearing.
Okay, then, then I must have it wrong.
All right, any more discussion?
All those in favor? All those opposed? Now, how are you going to go about doing that? We can't seem to get a list tonight.
No, we can't.
I don't think we've got enough time. It needs to be thought out.
All right, you need to do it in open session.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely, it can all be done in open session.
So, wait, so the actual, see, this is, I, you know, one question that I, I think that would be very helpful for us to clarify is just this, and I remember asking our town, canceled this in August, and he, he wasn't quite sure about it, and I don't think it ever got clarified. To me, the logical thing to do would be to prepare the document beforehand, somebody, a draft, circulate it, so that people have a chance to think about the document beforehand.
You can't do that with...
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. Now, I asked that very question, and Dave Martell said, you know, that makes a lot of sense, but I'm not sure. Okay, so, I would like, if we are condemned to literally, you know, sort of, can you imagine the Continental Congress, you know, having to write the Declaration of Independence in open session? You know, I mean, it would never get done. So, if we are condemned to try to wordsmith a document while in open session, well, then so be it. But I want to be absolutely sure that that is the case, just like I wanted to be very clear on the Redfern group home, whether we really are completely powerless or not, because that's not entirely clear to me. So, I, I think, you know, the first step would be to get clarification on that particular point, of whether you can prepare a draft of a document, make it part of the packet, put it on the agenda, circulate it beforehand, or whether, because, and, and if we can do that, then I think we've got a very efficient process of doing it. If, if not, then, you know, we'll, we'll have to wordsmith the document in open session.
But you can't have two people go do that. You can't have three or more. But two people can sit down and put together the draft for us to do.
Well, that's my point. Right, so, you know...
But two people can always do it, but I thought you were saying we should all do it and start circulating among the five. As long as two people do it, they can talk all they want to, the first time they share with the rest of us is...
No, no, but, no, but then a draft be circulated before the, say again.
It could be in the packet.
In the packet.
Well, okay, hold on. So, again, rather than let's be, I mean, here's the thing, I mean, let's get clarification on this legal point from our expert on that.
Fine, but, but we should all, we all also, Alex, can work upon our best understanding of what it is while we're getting that legal opinion.
Sure, sure.
So that we don't sit here and wait for a week while Dave Martell gives it.
No, I agree.
You know, a few of us think our best understanding is, two people can go sit in a room, go back and forth a thousand times, have 12 different meetings, and do what they want to.
Right.
But the first time they introduce it to any of the other five of us would be at the meeting as part of the meeting packet. They can't say, here's our draft, any comments while we, so we can go back in our little meeting of two people and talk about it again. That, I know you can't do, and I don't need to wait for Dave Martell to tell me we can't do it.
No, I guess what I'm proposing, what I'm suggesting is that a, a document be prepared beforehand, so that everybody can read it beforehand.
Yeah, it would be, it would be in a packet that we would get before...
Right, that's my point. All right, so...
But you see, the point, again, every time we try to do something, this board says, well, we want more information. We get more information, you say, oh, but I want to speak to the attorney directly, and that's not the specific question. The attorney came with a complete four-page document explaining how we do these. He's given us evaluations of open meeting law. And so, here we are going back to, let's go back to the legal opinion on how we're going to go forward in this evaluation process. So, it'll be another three months before this document's completed, when we should have started at least making the list now, instead of the subjective statements of reporting is inadequate. We could have at least started a, a moving forward, I'm, I'm very frustrated, by the way this is.
My motion is very specific. Yes, very specific.
Yes.
I will volunteer to be one of the people to work on this, to get a draft up, Performance Improvement Plan, that it outlines as close as we can to what are the items up here, in combination with the comments that were made, and try to get some suggested goals or expectations for next year, in concert with Stephen, and get it ready to put in the packet for review.
But that wasn't the motion. It wasn't for next year, it was 30, 60, 90 days. That wasn't for next year.
That's Performance Improvement Plan, is what he's talking about.
Yeah.
That's not evaluation. That is saying that if, if we have a document up and we say, okay, for, say, for the first 30 days, we're going to work on two elements of it, and then there's coordination with the town manager, and whoever it be is going to deal with them, and to specifically improve those elements of that, and if you've got that to the point of satisfaction, then you move to the next one. Instead of throwing the whole 12 documents out at one time, and it may never get accomplished in a year, and it may take two years to do it. It may not be a one-year thing. You may get seven of these items, six of these items up to where everybody's very happy with it, because there's going to be some tweaking of this process to go along to find out whether there's a given level of comfort considering the five personalities of this board. And it's not going to be an easy task, and it's, it's going to take time until we can finally hit the sweet spot that keeps everybody happy, if it's obtainable. I think it is. I, I, there was fairly united appraisal of this application right here. Okay, everybody, I think, had about the same feelings on some of the performance elements. So, I don't think we're that far apart. Our grades scattered a little bit, but, but the actual comments, when you read through them, there's a lot of echoing of the same thing written differently. Is that your feeling, Stephen? Yes. Because, and I don't think it's that difficult, I think it's just to sit down in a peaceful atmosphere and deal and work through it, until you get a performance thing that everybody's in agreement with, or at least four out of five, or three out of five, but at least get that out there and get it started. This year, we basically gave this document to Stephen, and we had no communication as a board with Stephen for the entire year up until the time of the evaluation, other than our emails and our anger levels building, because each side was starting to be more and more entrenched, were in their comfort zone. And we've seen the comfort zone here tonight pretty clearly demonstrated again. And I think Mark articulated, and Alex and Paul articulated where these trench zones are now, so we obviously know where we got to work, Marie. I don't think there's a mystery on where we need to work. We've got to find balance between, between what Stephen's saying the Charter is and what we feel is our responsibilities in the community within, with holding the Charter. We've got to get common ground, and if we can't get that common ground, we're not moving forward. Do you agree?
That was the nature of my, of facilitated discussion.
Yeah, well, but I, I think, generally, this group has not bought into the facilitated discussion aspect, so, and I say, why don't we give it one try before we resolve back in it? And if it's a total failure, then, yeah, you may have to go to, to the facilitator. But I don't think it's going to be required. I personally don't.
What's the harm in having a facilitator?
Well, why don't we identify through this process first where the problems really are, and if we can't solve them, then say, okay, go to facilitator.
I, I, I hear what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
And you're right, there was some consistency in this thing, and what the consistency said to me is, we need to have a facilitator come in and kind of educate us, because we are entrenched, and that's what facilitators bring people out of their trenches.
Well, I, I agree. And I understand what you're saying, but I think there was one common thread that laced every one of these reports together, and it was communication. And every single board member here feels that they have not received adequate communication. And that's a major element. You don't, we don't need a facilitator to talk to us about communication.
And we've all agreed, we want to work on the communication, and I don't know why now we can't just sit down and figure out five action steps for the next time that we go.
Because maybe...
Two action steps, one action step, we can't even, and that's the problem with this board, is that we don't sit down and make decisions and move forward on it.
But we just did.
Didn't we just...
Yeah, but I don't know why we're waiting for the next meeting to do it.
Well, I, my motion was very specific to develop a Performance Improvement Plan based on the 10 criteria we have in the, in the review.
And he just said, well, we're going to start with one criterion and move forward.
Do you have something, like an outline in mind that you could draft, that, because I, I'm not seeing it, do you have something you could draft?
There's 10 categories, and, and I would say, whatever number that says didn't meet expectation, so in other words, whatever ones met expectation, we're not going to work on a Performance Improvement Plan. It's to get those other ones up to the area that meets expectation. So, it would be to go through that plan, if there's eight items, six items, two items, whatever it is, those are the items that we have, and in 30 days, we sit down, is it gotten better? And we need to talk about that. Now, I don't think there's, I don't think there's anything that a facilitator's going to do that has nothing to do with roles and responsibilities, this is the agreed-upon review. And the action steps that come out of it, and we did the same thing with Robin Crosby when we did hers, there was a Performance Improvement Plan for communication in her first review. And, and so that's what my motion is, it's very specific, it is not, there's, there's no gray area. Take the categories that didn't meet expectation, that's the Performance Improvement Plan.
And that's what we vote...
And the only thing Richard suggested is that, take one or two versus whatever number there are.
We'll start on the whole block.
Fire, had a call from someone walking by, 74 Hawthorne.
It may get hard to throw...
The odor of gas in front of that residence.
50 elements out on the table at one time. So, if you start to introduce three or four or five, and you're working on, because the Performance Plan is going to take, it should take a sizable amount of time during the year to implement everything, because there will be changes. It's, it can't happen overnight.
Perhaps the MMA has some guidance on this, that, like a sample document that they could share with us, so if someone, if another community has done this, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I mean, I guess I would, I would make the statement that I don't see it as cleanly as the 10 items, and here's the processes for review. I, I mean, the majority of the board gave me extremely low grades, and made extremely negative comments, and I've tried to, I believe that's an accurate assessment of their view of my performance, but I don't know that I agree that it is an accurate assessment of my actual performance. And the parts of those negative comments and the low numbers that I feel I am responsible for, I've tried to take to heart and reflect in those goals. Which is why, with the comments in mind, I am having a hard time visualizing what performance steps, because I'm sitting here thinking to myself, okay, well, I'm not afraid of negative feedback, I think, as you saw, you read the department head reviews, they said, I do take feedback and input from others. And how can I do that? And I'm trying to find ways to bridge the gap here, and I just, I don't see it. And so, that's where, and that's where I think, Paul, if you took a stab at it, maybe, or we went to MMA and said, is there an example out there we're talking about?
And I would just say to the board, this is our decision, we voted on it, we had a board member volunteer that he would put, he would volunteer to set up a process. Again, I don't, what I'm looking at is, we did a review, the parts that did not meet expectation, it's agreed-upon review, it's a review in the contract, is that's what we need to improve upon, the areas that did not meet expectation. And I would think that the other areas, if they met expectations, if it was a three and you, you say we should get to a four, or whatever, but I'm looking specifically on the areas of addressing those.